Oh yeah. Do you have the kind that, that, uh, that you put air in it?
No. I have one of those at home.
I gotta switch chairs. Hi. Wearing it permanently.
You're putting two on.
Yes, everybody's here.
Okay.
I'm gonna with the Buddha.
Roll this baby.
All right, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order.
We'll do a roll call. Uh, Chair Wilson.
Here.
Vice Chair Kirk.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Porter. And Commissioner Dew.
Present.
Thank you.
If you would please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance read by, or done by Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Kirk.
Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to live and work in a democratic society and participate in its governance. Please give us the wisdom to make decisions in the best interest of the citizens and the city of Victorville. Amen.
By the United States of America. Public where we stand. One nation under God.
All right, our first order of business is the approval of minutes from our January thirteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting.
The move.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dew, a second by Vice Chair Kirk. A call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved.
And moving on to agenda item number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number one is Planning Case Number PLN sixteen dash zero 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 one. Uh, just a note on that, it was incorrectly noted on the agenda as nineteen zero one, but it is PLN sixteen dash zero 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 one. This is a conditional use permit and site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for the conversion of a non-conforming single-family residence located within a commercial district in approximately nineteen hundred square foot commercial building. Um, and the site will also retain some non-conformities due to, uh, multifamily residential remaining at the back of the site. Essentially, this project, it's in currently now a C-one zone. It was C-two when the project was first submitted, it is now a C-one neighborhood service zone as a result of a recent zone change. Um, there is five residential units on site, a single-family home which had fire damage recently, and a four-unit apartment complex in the back. This proposal will convert the single-family home portion along the front edge of the site into commercial, um, a two-unit commercial building, uh, with a nine, ninety, ninety-one square foot unit and a nine hundred and forty square foot unit. Um, this will require, um, findings for non-conforming use, however, Title sixteen allows this and there are proper findings included in code to allow this conversion. There's also, um, allowances for freestanding signage that would deviate from code in terms of setbacks, uh, due to the limited size of the site along the front. It would be limited to monument signage, however, some setbacks from side to side, um, not encroaching into the right of way or affecting site visibility would be proposed along with this. Beyond that, the site, uh, meets, um, all Title sixteen requirements and to, including commercial design guide requirements, and the applicant is aware of the conditions and acceptable at this time.
Thank you. Like to go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number one. Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? I think none, I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Chairman Wilson, I find the project category exempt per sequel section fifteen three oh three, new construction and conversion of small structures and adopt resolution number P dash sixteen zero four, approving the conditional use. PLN sixteen dash zero 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 one, subject to attached conditions of approval. Adopt resolution number P dash sixteen dash zero zero. Site plan, portion case number PLN sixteen dash zero 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 one, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Porter, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved.
And moving on to agenda item number two.
Chairman Wilson, I have a potential conflict. I am, been a member of the Elks for forty-five years and I help do fundraisers for them, so I have a.
Okay. While Larry's excusing himself, if you do wish to speak to an item before the commission, if you'd please fill out a white card and give it to the, um, secretary, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Item number two is case PLN fifteen dash forty-two, and it is a zone change which would reclassify property from C-two to C-one for a, allowing a mental health counseling center with psychotherapy services that serve those under the jurisdiction of the courts or criminal justice agencies as well as probationers and parolees. This would, including sex offenders, I should add. This would, uh, happen at one four zero seven zero Hesperia Road, Suites one oh four and one oh five. The item had to be continued from the January meeting, if you remember, because the mailing labels didn't include, uh, three properties. Uh, one of those properties ended up, the Elks Lodge, that ended up being the one that, uh, didn't receive a notice. The other two were noticed because they owned multiple properties. Um, however, we recommended continuing that item, which was what happened. The applicant did speak at that item, gave a very good presentation on, uh, the need for the services and the counseling that they do. And while staff could see that the tide of opposition was growing, you received a letter from the Elks tonight, um, which was submitted, and it just in the workshop tonight, I should mention that a, uh, a, an additional letter was, signatures was passed out in the workshop, uh, for the, for this public hearing tonight. Sensing that tide was going to make it, uh, difficult for the Planning Commission to approve this project at this location, staff prepared a memorandum with four different areas in the city that either have the right zoning C-one or would meet the findings of an interim use permit that could be approved to allow this counseling center. The applicant spoke of, uh, not being tied to the area that he's looking at right now, and I think he prefers area B. Uh, there are pluses and minuses listed in the memorandum to the commission, and, uh, therefore, we're offering this as an option to the commission that if you, uh, were to go with denial at the proposed location, but could give staff direction on which of these areas might be suitable, then staff could administratively do a, a hearing at our level where if no opposition was received, we could approve it there, uh, without it coming back before the commission. Just an option, uh, of course, obviously, you need to have the public hearing and see what happens, but.
Okay.
Have any questions?
Yes, um, does the transit system go out to that area near Apple, in Apple Valley where it presently is located?
I don't know.
Because if there's transportation out there, that there's still, there's not any excuse for moving it. Yeah. But no, I'll, I'll ask the applicant, and I have another question for the applicant.
All right, I will go ahead and open up, um, the public hearing. I currently have three cards relating to this item. Uh, Mr. Scott Smith, would you please come up?
At the last session, I presented our, as much information as possible regarding what we do. If you were to Google the term, the containment model, this is what we're a part of. It's the three legs to the stool. You have counseling, you have law enforcement, and you have polygraph. And what we have found with intensive supervision and the containment model, these individuals do not reoffend. The recidivism rate is very, very low. We do not provide services in the township or the city of Victorville, and we have found that there are a large number of these individuals that reside within the city limits of Victorville. We have a large number of clients who claim they cannot attend counseling, nor participate in the containment model because they cannot get to our location in Apple Valley. So what we're trying to do now is we're trying to do our due diligence in front of everyone to try to open up a location to provide services to this population, so there's no excuses. We would love to be next door to the parole office. We would love to be next door to the police department. We are not married to the location that we've identified. We're very, very flexible, but it is a matter of public safety, and it's important to be proactive instead of reactive, because it doesn't make sense to be in here with the same people having these conversations after one of these guys reoffends, and we start looking at what we could have done to track him, to, you know, ring the bell, this guy's high risk.
Um, did you understand the question I asked? Uh, there's no transit system that comes near that, that, um, that building that you're currently in?
I'm pretty sure there's, uh, some public transportation. I don't know starting point and end point. I don't know what their valid excuse is, but I know they make it to the parole unit because they don't want to go to jail. So if you can make it to that parole unit, you can report to us.
They, they go to jail for that? What if they don't show up for counseling? Shouldn't they go to jail?
They could.
Yeah, well, it, it seems to me that if, if they don't show up to, to do the polygraph, that if they don't go to counseling and you're worried about.
I guess it becomes an issue of, uh, you know, a legitimate excuse, excuse, maybe three tires fell off his car, I don't know. You know, they can come in all different shapes and sizes, but we just want to remove the excuses. I don't care if your car ran out of gas.
They don't have an excuse for not taking a polygraph test. Why would they have an excuse for missing out on counseling?
I think they're very creative.
Well, but you can be very creative too. You know, you have to give them punishment if they don't show up.
Well, we don't actually have the punishment aspect. We will submit a status alert to parole to identify this individual did not show up, because we can't, that dual relationship, we can't provide services and threaten consequences. We inform the parole agent or the probation officer, whether it be the state or the feds or the county. Uh, and they're pretty strong at responding, but at some, some point, maybe they have their hands tied behind their back. If this person has figured out a legitimate excuse for why he can't make it, but you know, they're creative, and then one guy will find out, hey, if you say this, it'll work, then he'll share it with someone else. Maybe it's raining today, I have to stand at the bus stop and there's no sho, who knows?
So you're not the enforcement mechanism, you're just the reporting mechanism.
We report.
But, uh, but you work closely with the probation department, so if they made it as a condition of probation.
It is a condition of their supervision.
Okay, there.
To participate and report.
That, that's, I was wondering that as well, so if they, you know, I totally believe you when you say there's gonna be all kinds of excuses, they're not gonna show up. You know, are, is law enforcement actually gonna go after him, or does it get swept under the rug? You're just trying to do your part on the counseling. If that's, if that's the case, and that's what you've been seeing with Apple Valley, which is just a few miles out there, it's not like you're asking him to go down the hill or anything.
We've, we've had.
Wouldn't that happen as well if we were in Victorville and Green Tree or Victorville?
Well, it, it, it becomes a flimsy excuse if you can report to your parole officer off of, uh, Amerigosah. And if we're in that general area, I don't see how you could have a plausible excuse not to report twice a week for counseling if you can report one block over to your parole agent, and if your parole agent would believe that, I would be surprised.
You're saying, so your feelings are the closer to the parole is that you will probably have more attendees?
We've, we've heard excuses that, in the time it takes me to get back from Apple Valley, it's dark, and now I have to walk through the community and it's dark, and my parole agent is mad at me because I'm walking around after sundown, because they wear GPS. This is plausible, you know, um, I don't ride the bus with them.
Just for clarification, I know last month you had kind of explained the entire procedure that, first of all, you're not an advocate, but basically you're a counseling service that works very closely with the parole, um, parole department, that if there are signs that come up, whether it's to the polygraphs or just your one-on-one counseling, that then you can directly work with probation to try to get these people picked up so that they don't have a recurrence, and that you've been very successful with the models that you've used in other areas that you've been at, or where your, where your services are at.
So what we've found is, a lot of these individuals that truly have a problem, they can present well for a short period of time, but if you can engage them in a conversation on the right level, eventually, they'll start to expose who they really are. And a lot of these individuals truly believe their behavior was not criminal, they truly believe that the individual who was the victim bought some of this on themselves from either the way they were dressed or their actions. They believe this, and those are the individuals that we contact their, uh, agent of record or their probation officer of record, and we inform them, this individual is an issue. You may have thirty people on your caseload. This one requires intensive supervision. You know, not where does he go every day, but what does he do when he's there? I mean, some of the things that are disclosed are disturbing, but you have to engage the individuals, you have to have a conversation. Some of it is, you know, uh, it's cognitive behavior therapy, but it's offense-specific. You know, that individual that is so angry, you know, that the first time you meet him, he wants you, he wants to beat you up, and, and we've had a lot of those guys. The first time you meet him, you know, it's almost an assaultive situation. That individual's high risk, because your case has been already tried, you already went to jail. What are you, what are you beating us up for? You know, there's something to that, and we'll start working at it. And if the first therapist can't get to it, we'll reassign him to another therapist, and we'll come at it a different way until we start to get some clues to what makes this individual tick. And, and they will, they will give up information if they're given an opportunity, and sometimes it takes a while, but we'll learn enough and we'll send them to polygraph, and we have their agent of record or their probation officer give us information, because in some ways, it's an interrogation. Okay? And, and that agent of record may have questions that he can't get to, but because of therapy and the polygraph, or we can start to ask more specific ques, questions. Specifically, have you been alone with a minor since you've been on parole? That's a very simple question. You should be able to answer that question without the polygraph jumping off the paper. That's a very simple question. Have you been alone with a child since you've been on supervision? If you can't answer that one question, now we have some intensive therapy to go to. We're gonna call your agent in, because the GPS shows where you are, it doesn't show what you're doing or who's around you. And before Grito, before some of the other high-profile cases, these individuals were in our community on probation or parole, but it was not intensive supervision, and there was outrage. Some of the same people that would not want a counseling agency on their street would be the very same people that are in here outraged if one of these individuals commits a crime while he's on supervision. See, can't win.
And just to be clear, you know that, um, I know you said you're not tied to this location, but you are open to looking at other locations to bring the services, because I do feel that they are of value and they are needed based upon the information that you have provided.
I, uh, take the liberty of. I'd like to take the time out to go over, thank you. I'd like to take the time out to go over the first paragraph, and so I'll, I'll start with the, uh, first sentence. Open-door counseling is the sole contract holder for the state of California and the federal government to provide community counseling and monitoring of individuals in the city of Victorville who are on parole or probation for a sex offense. You stand by that statement?
Yes, sir.
Um, do you happen to know, I know that at, uh, at last year's testimony, you indicated how many sex offenders were in the city of Victorville, did you not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What you didn't indicate, how did they arrive in the city of Victorville?
I don't know.
You have no idea?
Uh, maybe they lived here before their offense, maybe they settled here, I don't know.
Is it, uh, safe to assume that these people prior to being released, they were incarcerated somewhere?
Yeah. Before they went on parole, they were incarcerated.
Okay, so you really can't say that these people were born here in city of Victorville, or, you can't say that, can you?
No.
Just like I can't, I can't indicate to you how many engineers we have in the city of Victorville, I can't in, indicate to you, uh, how many scientists we have, I really can't. So, that's where I, I begin, because, are you familiar with the city of Atlanta?
Yes.
How so?
I've been to Atlanta a couple times.
Are you aware that they have one or more prisons?
No, I have no idea about their correction system. Atlanta, Georgia?
Uh, Atlanta.
Oh, Atlanta.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Uh, I've been to Atlanta.
This is, this is, this is a neighboring city.
Yeah, I've been to Atlanta.
House three ninety-five.
Okay.
Okay. Are you aware they have prisons there? Oh, so you, you are aware of that. Is it plausible that these individuals that, who are your clients, is it plausible that they were released from the prison in, or a prison or prisons in Atlanta and decided to reside in the city of Victorville? Is that plausible?
I, I believe, uh, that they're to be returned to where they came from. I don't believe that individuals are allowed to choose where they're going to be paroled. I, I could be wrong, but my understanding is that communities have grieved that, that no one wants to be dumped on, that there must be a reason why someone's being, um, housed in a certain city. I don't know, but I would be surprised if they're able to pick and choose where they go.
Okay.
I, I do know this, you have some individuals that can't return to the city they came from because the victim can file, uh, some type of grievance and demand that the person not be within twenty-five miles of them. So that would be a legitimate reason why, if someone was from Pomona, he wouldn't be allowed to go back to Pomona, because the victim resides in Pomona, and it would make him go to, maybe to Long Beach or something.
Okay. Your second statement is, in your paragraph, you say currently, there are dozens of registered sex offenders living within the city limits of Victorville that are not enrolled in counseling and extensive monitoring because of their excuse is that they cannot, um, have, they have no way to reach our office. You stand by that statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I, I have a problem with when you use the word excuse, and here's the reason why. I consider you to be an executive, and I have been in several executive positions, and one of the things is, being an executive, it's rare, um, and intolerable for me to accept excuses. Reasons, that's a different thing. As it relates to responses, I don't respond well to that either. I prefer people to have answers than responses. So, this is not a lecture, this is something I'd like for you to take note of when you deal with these clients and your individuals. You also indicate that you have the, uh, the support of the, um, the federal government and, uh, the state of California. With that said, just from your first paragraph, you know what you have really indicated to me? That there is a transportation problem and not necessarily a housing problem. So, with the state of California and the federal government, it seemed to me that they would deem it possible for either to provide vehicles, drivers, uh, gas cards, you know? Governments do those things, and so I see this as a transportation issue more so than a housing issue. That's, uh, my hurdle. And also, I'd like to go over this definition, two definitions. One is the safety. By definition, the condition of being protected. Security, that's another thing. The state of being free from danger or threat. Those are the definitions for safety and security. I think that in providing the service that you do, I think, as the chairman indicated, it does have value, but I do not see a housing problem for the city of Victorville. I see a transportation problem. So, let's, um, knowing that the city of Atlanta does have prisons, um, maybe they can be in the, the process of petitioning to the state of California as well to the federal government where there's a grant for vehicles, drivers. there's a grant for vehicles, drivers, some means of transportation. Because the city of Victorville is the most populated city within the Victor Valley. It has approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand people. That is a hurdle for us to overcome. It's not like we have twenty thousand or thirty thousand people compared to the three hundred or more individuals on which you provide a service to. So, safety and security is a hurdle that is a high bar for the city of Victorville. And I find transportation for your clients to be a solution. And that's why I went over your document very thoroughly, because I think you pose a transportation problem and not a housing problem. I yield back to the chairman.
And just clarification, Commissioner Do, when you say housing problem, what are your...
I don't see a need for a business or operation to be here in the city of Victorville. I find that, as indicated by the first paragraph, the issue is transportation, not housing. So if there was a solution to the transportation problem, then I would think that people would not provide excuses. That's my view.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Smith the question, trying to form it here. You basically just report back to probation, those that have attended, those that have not. You don't accept the excuses or deny the excuses. You basically just report who was there, who wasn't. Probation is the one that either signs off and says, yes, it was raining, and I'm sorry you had to sit at the bus stop, or they say, no, you should have been there, and this is the appropriate action. Is that correct?
Exactly. Exactly. And individuals share, they share information. You know, I said, and I made this excuse, and it was accepted, who knows? You know, there's a lot of these guys, we have a very difficult job, we get beat up from all sides, we are not an advocate for this population. I'm pretty sure, if you check some of the public sites that track these individuals, you will have some of them in your neighborhood. And hopefully, if you do have any in your neighborhood, he's still on supervision, and we have him in counseling, and we're subjecting him to polygraphs, and we're meeting with his supervision deputy or his agent, and we're discussing anything abnormal that we've learned from this individual. Like I said, some of these guys may never reoffend, might turn out to be good neighbors. Some of these individuals do not believe their behavior was criminal, and they, on a daily basis, like an alcoholic would have to fight the urge to drink, they're aroused by things that don't arouse the rest of us. And we need to know who they are, and we need to inform law enforcement, so this individual can be intensely supervised.
No questions?
Um, I don't remember if it was stated by you last time, or if I read it somewhere, but the, you mentioned at least a, over a hundred offenders, and I don't know, it was...
I believe on that date...
Know the numbers in Victorville, maybe just estimates, percentage?
On that date, it was, I believe I had three hundred and forty-nine on that date.
That's in just Victorville or the High Desert?
No, that was Victorville.
What do you think is Sperry Apple Valley, the surrounding communities that you would service as well, right?
They were not as high, but you know, they were, it was a cascade, but by and large, Victorville had the largest percentage. And I don't know how they got here, I don't know if they were born here, or they ran out of gas here, but they're here.
But you serve all of them, not just Victorville?
Yeah.
It would serve in the High Desert area?
Exactly.
Up here, okay. Thanks.
And just one more question. Probation for the entire High Desert is in the one location, I believe, off of...
Parole.
Parole, I'm sorry, parole is off of Amerigoza, I'm sorry.
It's bordered by Palmdale, Amerigoza, Freeway, and Dale...
Civic?
Whatever.
Dale, not Dale, I'm trying.
Little block is.
Yeah, okay.
May have a difficult job also, because everything is great until something happens. And that's when people wanna ask a lot of questions. I can take this, Mr. Do, I appreciate you. It'll be far worse if an individual assigned to our program reoffends against someone in this community. I'll have to answer to a lot more questions than that. So, I don't have a problem with the hard questioning, we have a difficult job, we try. The individuals that are in our program go to jail, they do not reoffend. We do everything we can to cooperate with law enforcement, we go over their head when necessary, to the unit supervisor, and these people are very ethical, they have a very difficult assignment, they take it seriously, and we try to go by the book. That's the way, you know, and the way that we provide services to these guys. And it's challenging, because it may take weeks or months to get the right disclosures, or you have to communicate on a certain level where they feel comfortable. Okay? And then you gotta go home and take a shower. Because to get a person to disclose certain things to you, you have to almost make it seem like it's okay. All right? So, if you wanna come and help, you're welcome, but you have to take a shower at the end of the day.
No questions, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a card from Mr. Jim Clinton.
Hi, good evening. I don't disagree with Mr. Smith as far as there may be a need, but as you can see, I wrote a letter on behalf of the Elks Lodge, since we're directly across the street from the project. And basically, our reasons were very simple, first being the zoning. We feel spot zoning is inappropriate, especially given the size of Victorville, as we've just said. There has to be so many areas that have the proper zoning, and that are not so close to a major residential area. And I can just attest to that, during the afternoon, you have young people, and when I say young people, I'm not talking teenagers, I'm talking younger than teenagers, that walk from that one project over here, on the east side or the west side, and they walk all the way down to the liquor store, that crosses that, about another block down on the right-hand side, and they walk all the way back. And then when school gets out, even though that school's like four blocks north, you see a lot of kids that are walking all the way through there. So, to me, that is a red flag for us. That's number one. And of course, the number two is the residential area, the fact that it's the zoning and the residential area. The Elks itself, our members are kinda concerned with that. We have at least several functions a year that involve young people, children ages anywhere from two to eighteen, depending, and so that's our biggest concern. The other thing that you have, that I gave to you earlier this evening, was a letter from the Disabled American Veterans that just happened to meet at our lodge once a week, and they happened to see this posted, and what we were going to be doing about it. And they wanted to get in on this, because they felt very, very strongly about it, so they typed up this letter immediately and handed it to me a few days ago, as you can see, where they, they had a meeting there, and of course, all the people that were at the meeting signed this petition, which is front and back, and to have me bring this to you, explaining their concerns as well. Well, I have...
Questions for Mr. Clinton? Thank you. I also have a card from Vida Adams.
Vida Adams, 13393 Mariposa Road, space 190. I come to you with a little bit of experience of being a real estate broker and a property manager. I've managed the building where the parole department is, and I, as a citizen, I feel the need for some control of these people that are on parole, and some help for them to rehabilitate them to the community. Whether they came from here, or whether they didn't, they're in our community now, and we may have that responsibility. So, in that way, I certainly support what Mr. Smith is and the government are trying to do for us. I do have a concern about the spot zoning for the location on Hisperia Road. I tried to do a spot zoning on Bear Valley Road, and was told that the city could not do that. And we ended up doing a much larger section of road to get the zoning, and it was a good thing for that area. So, that was my only concern. It looks like the alternative sites B and C would be ideal, and that this tenant is, this person is willing to go into those locations, and they are close to both parole and other governmental agencies, so would be preferable to the one that they were looking at on Hisperia Road. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? Being none, I will bring it back to the council.
One other comment. There's also a children's eye clinic that is right there on 14075 Hisperia Road, it's near the Elks. They do a clinic once a week, so I want you to hear that. There's a lot of children in that area. I also have a comment that, in the civic center area right now, we have the courthouse, we have the police department, we have the California Department of Corrections, we have the county probation department, we have the rehabilitation parole office, and what else do we have to add to make our civic center so nice? You know? I just don't see that we, when it is actually being, the service is being provided, if it disrupts them, then so, that's too bad. They shouldn't have something that they have to, they have to be responsible, or they need to go back to jail. That's my comment.
As I had stated, as it relates to safety and security, this is a pretty high bar and a serious bar. I may have, there may be concern for approximately three hundred-some individuals, but overall, I can't see how that over, is far more important than the safety of approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand people. And then, I, it's not my impression that people grew up in the city of Victorville to become sex offenders. I would say that as a result of wherever they come from, we have to deal with the fact that Mr. Smith has posed a transportation dilemma, in my view, more so than a housing view. And so, with that said, whatever can be done through the state of California, or the federal government, or local agencies to assist Mr. Smith with transportation of these individuals, I think that's the dilemma which we face. That is my view.
Well, I am gonna go ahead, there's no other comments. I'm gonna make a motion to deny the application to find that the zone change and conditional use permit exempt from the California SEQA pursuant to SEQA Section 15061B4 and 15270, since projects that are denied are exempt from SEQA, and adopt resolution P-16-002, recommending city council denial of the zoning change portion of case PLN-16-00042, and adopt resolution P-16003, denying the conditional use permit portion of case PLN-1500042, based upon the inability to find that the, or the findings required by Section 16-3.02.1 or 050 of the Victorville Misery Code, and the need to protect the health and safety and welfare of the residents of the community, including single and multifamily residential developments, schools, assembly uses, and other social services within the approximate half-mile radius area, and that the city of Victorville has disproportionate number of social services and programs for the parolees and probationers when compared to the neighboring cities within the Victor Valley, and the land use, existing locations within neighboring cities, neighboring cities, which can adequately serve the needs of the city of Victorville. But also, add in that to possibly have, work with the city in areas A and B, find an adequate location to provide the services that they're looking for.
If staff could just ask that those be two separate votes, that would be good.
Two separate votes, okay.
Can I make a clarification on what your motion was? Is that, was that part of your motion, that they would be subject only to those two sections? Or anywhere that seems to maybe work for them and the neighbors?
That would be, I guess, a second motion.
I'll second the first motion. First motion.
So, we have a motion to deny the zone change portion with a second, by Chair Wilson.
And the conditional use permit.
And the conditional use permit. And a second by Commissioner Porter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that first motion has been denied, that part of the case has been denied. So now we have another motion.
And there's a motion by Chair Wilson to offer up areas A and B...
E and C.
As direction to staff for possible location.
Okay. And that would also seconded by Commissioner Porter?
No.
No.
No, only that, I was waiting for a second.
That clarification, that is not saying that it would only be A and B, but it would be...
Prefer it? Would it be A through D, or just A and B? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not quite, maybe, Rob, maybe you'd like to clarify with the motion.
Just kinda what I heard was that the motion would be then, that the commission would support area A and B? And I do support that, but not only area A and B, what if they found something in area H, way out, that seemed to work and worked with the neighbors? I wanna make sure that the motion isn't pigeonholing this to one or two little blocks or areas.
If our staff located or identified four areas, clarify that? Yes, staff would prefer more direct direction on specific areas. So, if you're fine with staff handling this at anywhere in, any location in the city, and we run into no opposition, and you're good with that, that sounds like what Rob is saying.
I think so, 'cause it might be on the other side of that white line we're seeing, and it may work.
Right, so...
And it's gonna be conditional use permit?
So that's two different motions, then it sounds like, unless, Bob, you're opening it up to the, wherever they find another location they like, we can try it at staff level. We were doing, we were willing to do that if there was, you know, if the commission was okay with that, so maybe we should just move forward with Bob's motion of the original...
Then I'll go ahead and remove my motion.
And, we've done the CUP, or we denied the conditional use permit, and now the second motion is to give staff direction, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and should the applicant, my motion would be, should the applicant come back into the city to look for an alternative site, I would leave it to the jurisdiction of staff level first to take a look at that site, as it's going to need to go through conditional use permit, public hearing process, and then it would come to the commission. If needed.
And I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Kirth, a second by Chair Wilson, to allow the applicant and staff to work together for an alternative location that may deem appropriate and handled at the staff level. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Motion dies.
The motion fails.
Is there another motion that would like to be thrown out?
Then I'll go back to my original motion of looking, allowing the staff and the applicant to work on a appropriate location in the areas... to work on a appropriate location in the areas, loca, notices, area A and area B in the agenda.
No second? Motion dies.
Motion died.
So at this point, it would seem that the project is denied with no recommendation for future location.
And the applicant has 10 days to appeal this decision to the City Council. And the next available meeting, depending on how quickly that appeal is received, could be as early as the March 1st City Council meeting, possibly March 15th City Council meeting, for time for public noticing.
Thank you.
Okay, just asked a clarification of, of staff. We said the motion died and then it was a, or it was actually a denial with no recommendation for future location. Does that mean they can, they can come back without prejudice?
Yes, oh yeah.
And, and look at, is any applicant coming into the city?
They can't come in to the, in the same location as they proposed.
Right, right.
But they can.
I don't think that would get past staff level too easy to go to commission.
But no, there's no prejudice against them trying other locations.
And one, one other thing while the applicant's here as well, the, the reason I, you know, made a second to deny that is I haven't, you know, we've seen some zone changes and we've seen some controversial uses come in, but it's really rare that the neighbor, surrounding neighbors, that we see a petition and such public comments. It was very tough for me to, to overlook that with my past history. And one more question for staff, should they eventually come back, you know, find the right location, is there any way to try to, I know we have public notice requirements, any, any way to try to expedite anything when they come in there? Because I know it's quite a process to get through the, you know, the city process and the public hearing and all that. And I know the, I, I've done some research and I know the importance of what this organization does, and I really wanna see it, you know, be, be, taken advantage of that up here.
I think that's the, the idea behind having it administrative is the, those zoning administrative hearings are held on the first and third, Wednesdays, while the planning commission meets on the second Wednesday. So it does, it only offers a week difference, but there is that, those extra meeting dates.
Yeah, I just wanted everyone to be, you know, cognizant, which I'm sure we are, should they find another location, I would like to make it as easy as possible going through the government processes.
All right, I'm moving on to a, a public comment. In compliance with the Brown Act, can somebody get Larry? In compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. I do have one card, Mr. James Mayo.
I'm Mr. James Mayo. I'm the chairman of the High Desert Community Coalition here in Victorville. On behalf of the High Desert Community Coalition, I would like to address the City Council's request that you review the exist, existing requirements for new liquor stores to open in our city. Victorville's existing conditional use permit was adopted in order to stop the growing disproportionate number of liquor stores in certain parts of the city. The census tract in question by the City Council has nearly tripled the cap of liquor stores the State Department of Alcohol Beverage Control has set based on population. That is already too many. Under the city's existing conditional use permit, no new off-site alcoholic beverage establishment can be within 600 feet of residential property, schools, religious facilities, parks, or playgrounds. We would like for you to keep these restrictions in place. We are very concerned that some existing liquor stores are endangering our youth with practices such as not checking for proper identification before selling alcohol. On two previous occasions, one of our volunteers who has a youthful appearance found that the majority of liquor stores she visited in Victorville were not checking for ID. Our coalition members have been taking, have been, excuse me, talking to owners of Victorville businesses located near liquor stores. So far, they've been complaining of drug deals taking place outside the liquor stores in their shopping centers. We've had several restaurant owners in these areas tell us that people under the influence are coming in and demanding free food. These are not the kind of conditions that inspire the new businesses we'd like to see in the area move in and set up shop. When businesses create dangerous or unpleasant conditions for the shops around them, this drives potential customers and new businesses out of the area. A wide selection of businesses such as gas stations, general retail stores, pharmacies, and grocery stores will improve our community, and overconcentration of liquor stores will not. Victorville already has more than 80 alcohol off-site licenses. This gives everyone in Victorville plenty of, plenty of choices when they want to purchase alcohol. We fully support your efforts to clean up the city and make it safer. The code currently in place does that. The existing laws should be strengthened. We do not want to see the city take a step backward by relaxing them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. The document which he just read, is he's gonna submit a?
I can, I can get one for you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public comment? And I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. A presentation of reports by commission members. Have a discussion on the beer and wine sales that came up recently.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Mayo, you may wanna stick around just for a minute. The, the meeting that Mr. Mayo is referring to was, happened at the last week's City Council meeting. Jim Cox has asked for, for the issue of beer and wine sales to be placed on the council agenda for discussion. I sent it to the commissioners in email format with a link to the council hearing so that you could listen to the discussion. The question seems to be that there, there may be a, a thought that the commission didn't take into consideration the ability for a store to just sell beer and wine, and would that be okay? And that if all we were worried about, I think Jim said, if all we were worried about was the little bottles and hard liquor, then beer and wine should be fine. I wanted to just point out a couple of things with regard to the discussion, and that was that the small-scale stores versus the large scale, and that we have a, a set square footage standard, and that was discriminatory. That was stated. I, I, that's what planning commission does, that's what cities do. We have zoning that doesn't allow churches. It allows churches in one zone but not in another. It allows uses, we, we say that uses are okay in one zone but not in another. That's discriminatory too. You're making the rules for what you think is best for the City of Victorville. We set those, that square footage, actually, we set it at 12,000, then we ended up bringing it lower because we want stores like Rite Aid and Walgreens and Bevmo to be able to locate in the city. But we, and, and I goes back to that, Larry asked me, it sounds like we're, he said, it sounds like we're trying to run out mom and pop stores. And in a way, we are, because they're the ones that cause the most trouble. They're the ones that don't, they don't ID, as he said, they don't ID as often as the corporate store will. They're more apt to sell bath salts and spices and other illegal products to your kids. They advertise alcohol sales and tobacco sales outside their stores way more often than, than large corporate stores do. And, and the stores just aren't as clean. They, the sheriff, I asked the police chief for the, the email that he sent, because I thought that might help you with your decision. The other thing I wanted to point out was that Councilmember Cox and the mayor, Gloria, seemed to say that the overconcentration, they thought it was an ABC mandate, and it turns out, no, it's a city mandate. That's, actually, it's absolutely backwards. Overconcentration is an ABC mandate. It's in state law that ABC cannot issue, shall deny, it says, shall deny a license for alcohol sales in a census tract that's overconcentrated, unless the city makes a finding of public convenience and necessity. That's what the City of Victorville's been doing for the past 40 years. So that's what we discussed when we were making that ordinance, and we said that we don't wanna continue allowing alcohol sales throughout the city if it's overconcentrated. It means there are enough stores in the city already for public convenience and necessity already. That's where the overconcentration, that's why that aspect of the ordinance is in there. So I just wanted to clarify those from the discussion, and if you had any questions for staff, Scott and I are available. And all we're looking for, I didn't wanna submit a lot of information to you, I wanted to get it on the agenda as fast as possible because if we did this in March, then, and you were just giving me a recommendation that, yeah, you wanna see more information, then it would take us another month to get that information to you. It's gonna be that stack of materials that we saw previously. So what we're looking for tonight is, is, and what Councilmember Cox and Councilmember McCackren said was that if the commission says the law is okay the way that it's written, that ends it. So you either think you wanna hear more information, or you're fine with the way it is, and that ends it. So if, glad to have you go and give your thoughts or opinions and whether you think it's okay or not, that, we would appreciate it.
Well, I do remember we did have a lot of discussion on it in regards to the 300-foot radius, the 600-foot radius, the types of services that were being offered in the different tracts because of the, you know, some, some places had five or six, and other places had 20, 25. And so you did see that those, there was an oversaturation in, in a lot of areas. I personally am comfortable with the decisions that we made and that, how the law is currently written.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm, I'm comfortable with the decision. I understand where the council's coming from, wondering if maybe we didn't take certain things into consideration. And I think we did. I don't, I don't recall any of the documents or information or deliberation that we made that had anything to do with the beer and wine type of alcohol versus hard alcohol. And, you know, in, in, in some of the other comments where they had talked about, you know, are we discriminating against large stores, corporate stores, mom and pop stores? You know, I don't think we are, because in this case, we're still allowing smaller, even independent liquor stores, convenience marts, to come into this city with just a deeper look of overconcentration and the actual neighborhood, which is, I believe, what the planning commission is supposed to do, versus what we and the City Council recently did, where we just eliminated every last mom and pop smoke shop that could possibly ever come to this city. Done, over, along with other businesses. So I think this one is even more flexible, in my opinion.
I agree. I, I agree with the way that we did it. I, I don't see any reason to, for us to consider it again.
Well, I think if the applicant would have been here that night, I, I would have maybe changed my attitude, idea of this a little bit. And now beer and wine, to me, everybody sells beer and wine, it seems like every, selling it on the streets, I don't know. But anyway, beer and wine, to me, don't seem that bad. And I, I'm really concerned about small square footage that can't have beer and wine where catering to the larger markets. And I understand what we're trying to do. I would stay with our decision if it wouldn't be the. Council will have to make the final decision if they wanna. A little, little problem with not going with beer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I, I would like to say that the suggestion of beer and wine, we must also recognize that beer and wine is an alcoholic beverage, and as such, it is still a drug. You can look it up, it's classified as a drug. And with that said, they're in the same category. So I think we have an abundance of alcoholic establishments, and people can have free access to go to places to consume. So that's my view. So I, the argument of wine and beer versus whiskey, still an alcoholic beverage and is still a drug.
Yeah, any other reports by commissioners?
I'd just like to commend my colleagues regarding the dilemma regarding sex offenders. And I find that the commission face very difficult decisions, and they're not pleasing. They're just, the best decision was right for the masses of people, which we are responsible for, and those who have confidence in us doing the right thing. And I've always shared with individuals that, you know, every day of our lives, we make decisions, but we don't make executive decisions every day. And when if I decide to go someplace and purchase a suit, it is a decision, but it's not an executive decision. By my definition, an executive decision is a far-reaching decision, and those take careful deliberation and study in order to reach those decisions. I find that the commission does that, and I'm impressed with that. And thank you.
I have one other thing. I would really like to find out how close the transit system comes to the, the place in Apple Valley. I, even, just an email or something, because I can't believe that they can't get to, to that site. It's incredible that they don't get to the site.
I, I would just like to comment that. That was a good, very good point, Commissioner Doi. You're reading through his documents, like I said, like you're saying, and, and it, it's, he makes it sound like they're arrested if they miss a counseling appointment, but yet they make excuses all the time. So it was, it was.
They make excuses? You know, you don't, you don't even let your kids get away with that, you know? It's less than adult. That's all I have. I've said enough.
I'm gonna adjourn this meeting to March, or March 9th, 2016.
The death. What a positive discussion. Is there a fight out here? Oh, we forgot about you. Don't we forget about me? Meeting's over, it's all done.
Larry, did you take a nap on that bench?
Well, you better go home. Try to get out the back door, you won't let you go. Oh.